Good evening. I would like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June 27th. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
M. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Leturno.
Here.
Maroon.
Here.
Chertel. Sullivan.
Very here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry. And Chairman Servoni.
Here. Counselor Zandry has advised me that he has a work-related conflict and I think Chertel is walking in the door. Yes, he, in fact, would you like to hear him say it himself?
I would.
Here.
Got it.
All right, on to item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through L.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. On to item five, the public question and answer period. All right. Going once, going twice. Three times and done. I close the public question and answer period without question or answer. We will have to skip item six for now because we're running ahead of schedule. Onto item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the option agreement for solar energy facility ground lease with form of ground lease for the landfill property.
Why are you doing that now? You should, you should...
I'm sorry. You're gonna withdraw your motion?
Sure.
And we are gonna go right to the charter. We'll come back to item seven after item six. Onto item eight.
Chairman, I move we approve the proposed amendments to the charter submitted by the Charter Revision Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Testa.
Just for clarifications, where do we go from here? If this passes?
The next motion is to set it for the ballot and after that we decide how many questions. And I think we have a, if we don't want to decide how many questions tonight, I think we have a little bit of time for that, don't we?
Yeah, you do have time. I thought it should be on the agenda because if you wanted to do a series of questions, then, you know, we may need another meeting to, to craft them. That's, that's why I thought it should at least be discussed this evening to see what you wanted to do.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if this motion passes, am I to understand that all of the proposed changes in their current form would be going to the voters by some vehicle?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to further clarify, at this point, we can reject some of their changes if we so choose, but we can't add anything that they haven't...
Correct.
Okay. Put it there. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. I just wanted to, two things. A, on the PUC, I was for moving to five. But I'm not about to throw the baby out with the bathwater here either. I think the committee has done a good job. But I wanted to explain my reasons why going to five is important to me as a person in the business world. Because I believe between five and seven people make up a far more productive committee than three. Done a lot of Six Sigma work, lean management, and just from the business world, three is just not enough. The other part of this that I disagree with was earlier we talked about the council appointing any additional members beyond the three. I was not for the council doing that. We need an interview process and I think the mayor is far better equipped to do that than the council. And appoint professionals who understand the law around PUC and have some experience. But again, I'm not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I'm very appreciative of what the charter committee has done with our charter. It's a friendly disagreement. It's just a professional difference in how big the committee should be. But I just wanted to put my thoughts on the record on that, but I will certainly approve this as presented at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to expound on what Counselor Sullivan had to say. You know, I think we've seen through the CMEC litigation that, or at least in my opinion, there should have been more eyes on what was going on. And during that period of time, perhaps if there was more people on the PUC, there would have been those eyes. The other thing is that, just at their last meeting, one of the members was on vacation. Didn't call in to participate in the meeting, although we've heard that their rules allow to call in. We had two people at that meeting voting on important things. It's not good enough for me. Sorry. I don't think there's any legitimate argument not to expand it to five. Understand where we are. I too will not throw the baby out with the bathwater, but this is the one body that actually deals with them. People on the commission, like one of them was a former counselor, had some experience with that. I think it's very frustrating up here, time to time, dealing with the PUC and communication, getting information. I think the commission should have taken our thoughts and recommendation and at least seen fit to have that matter voted on by the public. And I'm disappointed. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I too was in favor of the PUC expansion and I too agree with Counselor Sullivan and Fishbein that, you know, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and, and the commission has certainly spent a lot of time on this. I just want to point out, you know, to the commission's credit, they began this process by examining the questions that were raised on the ballot in '09, in the last charter revision, which I believe included the PUC expansion. So it's, it's not like, you know, they didn't have to do that. Like if I were on that commission, I'm not sure I would have done that because it's, 2009 is not that long ago. So the, the town of Wallingford is, you know, as much as I'm for the PUC expansion, the town did vote on this less than a decade ago and they rejected it. So it kinda is what it is at this point, even though I, I wish it were different. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Leturno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow counselors. I too would like to see five. Right from the beginning, I wanted to see five. And I know the past charter commission maybe didn't look at it, or they looked at it a little bit, but, you know, the public vote on, voted on it, but they voted on the whole charter. It wasn't just that particular piece. And then it was, I had read a quote in the paper that when the charter was first formed fifty some odd years ago, that it was formed with a, with a three-member commission. And that was good fifty years ago. We were a different town. It was a different utilities. Much smaller operation. Wasn't as complicated as it is today. And I think we do need the the extra two. I agree with Counselor Sullivan. I, I, I don't think it should be up to us to appoint those people. I feel it should be through the mayor's office. But now procedurally, how can we do this? I mean, can we move, if we pass this hole tonight, the way it's presented? And then we're gonna be back at it again? Can, can this be added as a separate question or can we do that tonight or what?
No, this is, this is it. You approve this, reject it, or reject portions of it. This is it. It's done.
So if we reject that portion?
There's nothing to reject.
There's no change. So we're stuck with it, basically. We're stuck with it. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank the members of the charter commission for the, I mean, a lot of hours and a lot of time, a lot of deliberation. Hearing from all the different people in town and the officials, especially on the issue of the PUC and that was reconsidered again when it was initially decided not to. It's, I don't look at it as being stuck with, with the way it is. What we have now isn't, I don't feel broken and if other people feel that is, that's fine. But I, as I stated, completely deferred to the charter's countless hours, especially on this issue, to figure that out. So I just wanted to thank the charter. We had a very solid commission, I felt. Very strong eleven people from all different parts and all different parties in town that really came from a diverse background and, and ages and professions and love for the town. That really spent a lot of time to, to give us something that cleaned it up, just like we asked, looked at all the options that we asked them to look at and really put their hearts into it. So I just wanted to thank them for, for doing that for us. And what, what could be one of the larger or more important decisions that we make or that we've done in the last term is updating the charter like this.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the charter commission for the work they put in. It was long hours, a lot of time. And I know they worked diligently on every word they looked at. So thank you to them. I, I agree with my fellow counselors that wish the opportunity to have the question presented of increasing the number from three to five was in here. I like that idea myself. What I think happens is people like, you know, that expression, oh, if it's not broke, don't fix it. They like to say, you know, why change something if it's working? Unfortunately, sometimes we get in a situation where if we try to approach something to change it, it's either because there's something inherently wrong. Obviously wrong. We're trying to correct something. That's one way. Or usually the other time, you might just look at something and say, you know, we still could make this a little better. And the reason there's a distinction is because you don't want to give the impression that you think something should be changed and have that be an indictment of the current situation. In other words, somehow, and I feel this came into play, I, I think in people's minds, can't speak for them, but I, I think this came into play, where the expression, I, I heard this statement over and over again, well, you know, it's worked so well for so long. And the people that there did such a good job at some, and it, and it opened up the possibility of, of having a request for a change seemed like a criticism of those who have served for so long and so well. And I don't think that was the case. And it's unfortunate that, I, I think that might have played into it. There was also, we were told, you know, multiple times about the, how the question was considered, reconsidered and so on. And, and the votes that took place. And, and I, I definitely defer to the, to commission. I'm one to believe in respecting responsibilities that are delegated unless I truly have a problem with it and I question the process. I tend to try to keep hands off on a lot of things. So I would, I would not, you know, I would, I would, you know, I'm agreeing to go along with what they've presented. But I have to think that some of the times when they were voting on this, I know some, it might have been more a situation of, well, it's obviously this, this isn't gonna pass. So I'll, I'll go along with it. I think sometimes you get more unanimous votes that way than are necessarily truly unanimous votes. And I don't mean to say that people didn't vote their hearts and minds. Don't take it that way. But I don't think it was that clear cut that everybody in the commission felt that this was a question not worthy of consideration. But again, they think they did a wonderful job. I'm gonna respect their wishes. But I just personally think, on this day and age especially, you know, having five, at least five people on that commission would make it more workable. Allow for more disagreement, more differing of opinions, more, you know, other viewpoints. But, you know, we'll, we'll go with this the way we have it. We can't add the question, obviously. So I just wanted to express my thoughts that I wish that that was in here, but it's not. So otherwise, I think everything else looks good. And I, I thank the commission for their work. Thank you.
I will thank the commission without equivocation. You obviously worked long and hard, openly deliberated, considered each other's opinions. And had ample public hearings for public comment. You listened to the council when given the opportunity, or when you were required to listen to us. I think you've done a very thorough job and personally, I'm very grateful and I optimistically look forward to this version of the revised charter being adopted by the town, by the voters. If there's nothing else up on the council, I will open to the public for comment. Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I of course agree with you that it should have been five or seven, but one counselor made a comment up there that this was on the ballot in '09. And maybe that's the reason why they didn't do it again in seventeen. It's a short period of time. Well, at least one of the questions that you might approve tonight was on the ballot in '09 and they did approve it to go back on the ballot in seventeen. So that question would be the town clerk. So I gotta see what our time, there's nothing with, but that question was on the ballot in '09. And so I don't know if there was other questions. I don't even know what they're voting, you know, what some of the stuff is. But some of the, I assume some of the other stuff was on there in '09 too. And '09 was a different type of thing. They had some lightning rods that were in there that were very political and that's why it was voted down. It wasn't per se the PUC. The thing just got voted down, just, you know, en masse. It was just, that was the reasoning, not for that particular item. And it's very unfortunate that it's not on the ballot again, as all the, well, most of the counselors agree. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Going once, going twice. And I bring it back to the council and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Excuse me. Leturno.
No.
Maroon.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does. The next item is, well, I'd like a motion to approve placement of the proposed charter amendments on the ballot for the regular election in November of 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council.
I'm just questioning the, the order of our actions. Are we just, is this motion just simply to place charter questions on the ballot and not specifically which ones yet and then we're gonna clarify?
Correct.
I thought it was the other way around. Cause it said placement of the proposed charter amendments. Okay, I understand that. It just, we haven't specified how yet.
Exactly.
All right, I'm good.
That, that's because you could do it by special election.
Right.
That's why you're making that.
Any other comments from the council? From the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Leturno.
No.
Maroon.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. So the next item is how it is placed on the ballot. I believe sometime in the end of the last century, the last successfully revised charter went on the ballot as one question. So that's certainly an option, or we could discuss breaking up the amendments into multiple chapters or multiple ballot questions. Vice Chairman Laffin.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna lead with the motion to put the charter revisions on as one question. Because I don't, I don't see anything in there that's really controversial or worse, or worth breaking out and, and causing any sort of confusion as we may potentially see or as we saw in 2009. So, and I'm, I'd love to hear counter reasons not to do that. But so my motion is to place the charter revision amendments on as one ballot question for the November 2017.
Second.
Election.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Chertel. And Counselor Chertel, did you want to be heard?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my question is just what would the alternative be? Like how many questions would there be? I'm trying to think of, there's the environmental planner, there's the town clerk, there's the gender inclusive language. I, is that it? I know, I think I'm missing something. Or is there, the Board of Ethics? So I'm, I'm not against, I mean, obviously I think it's, it's easier to do one question, but I just want to understand what the alternative would be. Anyone wants to explain it?
Simply stated, I think what we would do is, what the past, the 2009 commission did was they sent it back to the law department after some discussion and the law department helped them come up with several, I think, were there seven or nine ballot questions?
I, I think that we have maybe seven.
Seven.
But that, you know, that was, you decided you want more than one. I'm not gonna decide that you're to how many there should be. It's your job.
Understood. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just concerned about having one question with a lot of text. When people go to vote, it's usually a very simple thing. And, you know, I don't know if we're gonna be appropriating money to educate people. You know, perhaps another discussion. But, you know, if you give somebody four separate questions in four separate boxes, you know, perhaps they would be more inclined to address them separately and to give them some thought than, oh geez, I'm just here for two seconds. I mean, not that I'm downplaying what people do in the voting booth. But people think it to be quick. Somebody might be apt when they see a lot of texts just to vote, I'm not getting involved in that, no, and, and go on. That's my concern. I don't know that we get down to four. I, I, I think there's another one or two in there. I know last time we broke it up. That's generally my concern. So I think I would be more in favor of having separate questions. You know, the other thing is somebody might not like one particular portion and then just say, you know, I'm not voting for the whole thing, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I don't think that's good government either. So I think I'd be more inclined of separate questions if we can put something together that's not crazy. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Maroon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I essentially agree with, with Craig. I think that, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing one question. My only concern is that we're all concerned with bathwater tonight. That's the buzzword today. So I'm also concerned with the bathwater. And I don't, I wouldn't want to see it rejected if folks were, say, had an issue with the environmental planner, as we saw some opposition to, and then decided to vote no on everything because of that question. So, so I guess I think for the, the, the democracy in it, to me, would seem to have, require more than one question. So folks could vote on their feeling on different issues. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah. You know, look, it's up to the public really to do their due diligence on this and understand what they're voting for, just as they would a candidate who's running for office. And I, and I think what's important is that we ensure that the information is provided timely and it's easily available. And like anything else, the expectation is people do their homework. I mean, we're all running for reelection, right? People should be looking into our, our voting histories and, and our backgrounds and seeing if, yes, we're worthy to be reelected. Same thing on charter reform. They should be doing their due diligence and understanding it before they go in and fill in an oval. And I think we have a responsibility here to make sure the information is there, it's accessible, whether it's on the town website, whether we have to publish in the paper. These are things that are important to me because I know there was quite, if you all recall, you were, you probably all voted in that last one, what a fiasco that was. There was so much misinformation and the feedback I got from people voting that election cycle on the charter was frustration. Was frustration. So, so I think that if, if we are going to properly reflect the good work our charter team did, we want to make sure that it's as, as, as simple as possible for people to have information, understand it, and then to go in and vote for it. I don't know if I'm going to support a multitude of questions on the ballot. After what I heard after the last cycle on charter reform, because people were really ticked off. And look, I use the term, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater, but let's put it on the shelf for the rest of the night. It's being overused here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you for that last comment, Counselor Sullivan, cause I was going to open by saying I'm at a loss here. I cannot come up with a cliche. And we're discussing the disposal of babies way too frequently up here. So I, I have a problem with the one ballot because I, I know, for, for example, of my, for myself, the, the issue regarding the town clerk appointment is, I think is very important. And I would not, I would hate to see, that, that's an important issue to me. I really want that to be something the town selects, that they choose on. And I would not like that one to, to not pass if, you know, we had one ballot question and people didn't, didn't like some of the other things on there. I don't think we have so many dramatic changes that we couldn't get this done in two to four questions maximum. We could combine a couple of changes in each, or we could simply, and they don't have to be very long questions. That's the other problem last time too. Those things read forever. No offense, you did a great job on it, but we asked you to put so much in it. A simple question, should the town clerk be, boom. Should the Board of Ethics Commission, boom. Should the environmental, and then the rest could be, you know, whatever. Language oriented. So I like the idea of, of going with a few questions just so people have an opportunity to consider those several, I guess, important changes, if you will, or substantial changes individually. So that's, and I have no problem with not having this decision made this evening. I'd like to see some options thrown at us. Thanks.
Attorney Small, if I may. If, if perchance we agreed to one question, how, how, how simple could the one question be?
Well, the question has, the answer has to be yes or no. So, I mean, it really would be a very simple, you know, should the proposed changes to the charter be adopted? I mean, it'd be very simple, yes or no. I will just say, you know, if you're, if you're going to send it to me to come up with a series of questions, I think this is actually more difficult than in 2009. I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't take a stab at it if that's what you decide, but I, I think because some of the changes are not, I don't know, I, I don't think that, because, you know, when you talk about, well, the question was too complicated. I mean, the goal of the question is to communicate, you know, what you're actually voting on. So if you're gonna get that specific in a series of questions, then you don't want to miss anything. So I'm not saying it can't be done, but they all have to be answerable, yes or no. So, and I, you know, my recollection is people complained about the number of questions and also I think didn't, thought some of them were complicated. So So, it's just my recollection of it. And, you know, someone said explaining it, you can do an explanatory material, but it can't be pro or con. It has to just basically state the facts. So, I don't know if we did one last time. I don't, I probably would've, yeah, I don't think we did. So, that is something you can do, but that's, it has to be very straightforward, just on the facts, and not one way or the other. It doesn't endorse anything.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the question itself, like the environmental planner, could be something like, should the environmental planner be a regular civil service position? Question mark. And then, you have an explanatory that says currently...
No, no, it doesn't go with, the explanatory note is not with the quest, it's not on the ballot.
Understood.
Oh, okay.
No, you, you have a document that goes along with it, that has a little paragraph that explains. Currently, you know, how the environmental planner is selected by the commission, and, you know, voting in favor of this would do something differently. You know, that's, that's an easy, so you're, you're making the question on the ballot very brief. You know, if somebody chooses to look at the explanatory thing, or not, it's there for their edification.
Well, the explanatory note, I don't think that goes with the, it's not in the...
It would have to be inserted with the absentee ballots and available at the polling places. It has, it has to be available with the ballot.
It may have to be posted, I'm not sure, but I don't think we did one last time, so.
I don't believe that, that one was done last time, but procedurally, I believe it has to go in with the absentee ballots, it has to be available at the polling place when the ballots are handed out. So, I don't, I think we can come up with, we don't have to have the actual language of changes, you know, changing line 23 to whatever.
Right.
On the ballot. The question can be very antiseptic, and then, you know, but descriptive. And then, the explanatory language would be a little bit more specific, and we go, so.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't taken a stab at creating the questions, but it just seems to be that I, because there's a lot of little things, I'm not certain how that would look, that's all.
You may recall, one of the questions last time combined a lot of the little things.
I, I recall that I combined the minor things into one question, I do recall that.
Yeah, so we could have that, and then there's the four or five really material changes that would be questions in and of themselves. That's the way I would envision this, so, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you. Just had a question. Janice, is there any requirement on the town to put out prior to the changes in that format you discussed? Are we required? Because you said we didn't do it during the last election cycle where we had this type of...
We didn't do an explanatory note. Within 30 days of today, the town clerk is going to have published in the newspaper all the changes.
Okay.
Okay, that's where it starts. It has to be available for the public to get a copy. So, it, it should be out there.
I, I think the explanatory note would be very important, and, and I'll tell you why, because, again, I, I just, my mind goes back to that la, last election cycle, and there was, there were, there were certainly two sides to, to, you know, those that wished to have the charter approved and those that did not. And what happened was, I can remember at Celebrate Wallingford, people handing out misinformation to voters. So, what I would like to see is some sort of explanatory public, publication by the town that is clear and concise, and we don't have people that may be not for this, handing out statements that are just not true. It confuses the public.
And that, that can be done, and that would be approved by you. I'm assuming you're gonna send it to me to draft it, so.
Of course. Of course. That's all I have. So, I, I do agree, we, we need some sort of explanation so the public can see exactly what the changes are, and it's available. I just wanted to make sure that happens, so we don't run into the same situation we had last, the last election cycle where the charter was on the ballot.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Janice, what's the timeline that you would need the questions determined by or broken out?
Well, they have to be submitted to the Secretary of State since September, correct? So, we have to have it done by September. So, that's why we kind of wanted to start the conversation today. I do want to just say, so that you know for the record, that it's my recollection that the Charter Revision Commission preferred a single question, for what that's worth to you. But, so we have, we do have some time, but so, if you were gonna do a series of questions, then I would want, I mean, that's kind of why it's on the agenda now, because it's, you still have to give some thought to it, so we'd have to draft something, and have to come back to you, either at the same time or at a different time. We do start working on the explanatory note. I'd give you a draft, and you decide whether you like it or not.
Okay. I, I'm, like I said earlier, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping this as simple as possible. I think, for the most part, people don't care or want to get tied up into the, the hops of, of town clerk, environmental planner, and things like that. And that's why we kind of went through it, and the, the Commission went through it heavily. But I, I get that everybody's concerned about breaking it out, which I'm, I'm fine with. I don't see how to break it out yet, so I'll defer to my colleagues for that. So, what I would like to do is, I'll motion to table my motion, not to come up again tonight, but to, but to just table it kind of indefinitely, so it's, it's left out there. But I would ask, then, that, for a subsequent meeting, that the counselors come before us with, we can put it on the agenda, with what they feel the question should be, what the topic should be. And then, we can discuss it then, and then send it for question drafting. And then, we, that should be plenty of time by September to have it done. We have one meeting in July, one in August. So, we'd want to wrap this up by August, so that we can approve it by September.
Makes sense to me.
When do the ballots need to be ordered by?
Well, we have, we have to submit the question by September 7th to, to the Secretary of State. We, we won't print the ballots until after the primary date, so it was, that's still September. But, you have, the question has to go by September 7th, so.
So, I mean, I'll...
You, you really gotta have it, you know, for Janice to work on, Attorney Small, by August.
Right.
Yeah.
So, my question is, then, is there enough time in that first September meeting for an up or down vote? No?
Well, you're not gonna meet, the 8th is...
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think they should do it at the July meeting.
No, because the 8th is, is before the first meeting in September. Because the first, I think, is a Friday.
So, then, I guess...
So, you need to get movement, that's why it's on the...
We need, we need to decide tonight, then, what the breakouts would be, so that we can review...
No.
No.
We, we have theoretically until August, and we could certainly put this back on the agenda for the July meeting.
Right.
Right, then, so July, and then what, drafted by August, and approved in August?
Right. So, our September meeting would not take place until the 12th.
Okay.
So, we have to have it done in August.
Right, so then, I move that we table this vote, this motion, and that the counselors have their proposed subjects for the July meeting.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing known?
No. No, I was opposed.
Okay. Did you record the single nay vote?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not doing anything we do now in the next one?
That's my concern. We tabled, we tabled that motion instead of defeating it and asking to go forward in a different manner.
No, I, I think that Counselor Laffin was quite clear that we're to come here on July 11th with some idea as to what we are looking for, if we are looking for more than one question.
Oh, we are?
Yes.
Each of the counselors come to the July meeting with their subjected breakdown.
Oh, that's gonna be interesting. Okay.
Which I thought we would need more time on than signing it right now over the next three and a half hours.
And...
Oh, you know how I feel about delegating, so. Okay. All right.
Well, there's nothing to discuss as the motion was tabled.
You were just discussing then.
Well, I understand that.
So, there was nothing to discuss, and why were you discussing? Why can't we submit to Janice by the 11th? And that she, I mean, is it anticipated that we just come to that meeting on the 11th with pieces of paper? And then, we share them, and that just seems like proper room. I mean...
It, that would be where the council decided what the subjects would be, versus us all just submitting environmental planner, town clerk. You say environmental planner, town clerk. Counselor Testa just says town clerk. I say one big question. So, instead of having Janice come to us with 37 different possibilities, we decide what the four subjects would be at the next meeting for, one, two, three, four, whatever. And then, we'll have the questions drafted, and then amended, and approved by the August meeting.
So, at that meeting, we are each going to opine on the entire, our, our, our entire envisioning of what is on the ballot?
Versus tonight.
Then, we're not prepared to do that tonight. I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing on July 11th, so I'm prepared. If that's what I'm being told is gonna happen, I'll sit here for the, all that time, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Back to Item 6, which is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed lease of the landfill property on Pent Road. For those not already advised, the project, the proposed lease is to, is, is to lease the land for the installation of solar panels for the generation of electricity. Any questions or comments from the public? Sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, right here. Daryl Stancuna, 18, Old Village Circle, Wallingford. I had a question about that, because I bring my own garbage there and recycling items, and I saw the big sign for tonight's meeting on that topic. And I had a couple of questions regarding that. This big glass device, how many feet is this gonna be in width and in height? Would be the first question.
Are, are you talking about the solar panels?
Yes. Is it one solar panel? Is it multiple? Is it one section? And how many feet would that be in width and height?
This is, this is on the capped landfill. This is not where you go to drop off your, specifically that location. The sign had to go up because it was, that was the place to put the sign. But you see the capped landfill? That's where the panels are going. And the first part of this process is for the company to do its due diligence and study the, the property itself to determine how big of a project it's going to be, and where everything will be located. So, that's to be determined as part of their due diligence.
Right, but like, how many feet are we talking in width and in height?
Of an individual unit?
Is it one unit? Is it multiple units? Do we know the background on the infrastructure of this dimension? That's my first question. That's actually my first question on this topic.
And introduce yourself for the record, and then you can address Mr. Stancuna's questions.
Sure. Joe Jordan, I'm a Development Director with Lynn Lease, working on the project. In terms of the actual panels that will be installed, it'll be multiple panels on the capped landfill, like Attorney Small was, was saying. The approximate dimensions will be about two feet in width by three feet. We're looking at whether to install them in portrait or landscape mode. Typical height of the panels will be between a couple of feet off the ground to 12 feet off the ground. We're looking at various different configurations about whether to lay the panels flat, and how that would work with the landfill versus a ballasted system where we have actual concrete ballast on the ground, and we set the panels on top of the concrete ballast, so that no piers go into the landfill and pierce the landfill.
Okay, and then, how many feet down would that go?
We won't be piercing the landfill, so they, they won't go down any feet. They would be resting on top of the landfill on a ballasted concrete system.
Okay, and then, how many feet would that concrete system be weighing on top of that landfill?
In, in terms of weight? What would the weight be?
Yes.
We're gonna have our engineers evaluate that loading, because that's also important in terms of how the landfill is loaded. We'll have to coordinate with DEEP on that, and that ends up being a math problem in terms of the type of loading that the landfill can bear.
And then, would there be some kind of testing on that landfill spot? Or spots to see how much weight that it can actually hold, and...
Yes, yes, there's, the, the testing is a math problem. It's, and it's around the weight of the ballasted system, and what kind of loading the landfill can withstand within safety limits. But it is just a land, a, a math problem that our engineers run.
Do you know how many feet of, not just the size of these units, but how much space that's actually gonna take up?
At this time, I don't know the exact space in terms of the, the, the lease premises or the leasehold. We're looking at 60 acres, a 60-acre section, and we want to try to use as much of that 60 acres as possible.
And is there any other spots in Connecticut that has the system or systems already built? That you're spinning it from?
I, I'm not aware of any other systems on landfills in Connecticut, but I know in Massachusetts, there are numerous systems on, on landfills that are installed using this ballasted system. In the process of, of doing the analysis on loading, the loading of a landfill, it's, 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 it's been tried and tested, and there are systems installed.
And this is environmentally safe, too?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when would this be happening?
Over the next, over the next year, we'll be doing the studies. So, we're, we're hoping to get into construction by the end of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
Bob Grosslong Hill wrote, is, after you have your public, you ask question, I assume you're gonna be asking questions of the gentleman sitting at the table. Is the public gonna be able to ask questions then? Because...
Now's your chance.
Now's the chance, so we don't know what you're gonna ask. All right. 60 acres, is that all town of Wallingford land? Or are you going more than just town of Wallingford land?
So, that 60 acres is just on the, the township property, and it's, it's 60 acres of, I believe the entire landfill property is approximately 82, 83 acres. So, it's 60 acres out of that 80, 80 acre or so parcel.
And do you know how many more years are through the mayor, to the mayor? How many more years that landfill has before it's cleaned up? Before it's safe for passive use again?
Do I know?
Well...
Mayor?
Somebody.
I think that question was directed to you.
I don't understand the question.
The landfill's been capped, as is the Barberino Trailer Park property. It's been, it remediates itself after years. Property does become usable again. The landfill would be passively used. I don't think you would build houses on it, but you could passively use it, you could build a factory, those types of things on it, after a period of time. Question is, do we know how much longer before that area is usable again? Have you talked to DEEP, or do we know any of those information?
My understanding is different from yours. I don't see that as a site to construct anything in the future. I believe the monitoring has to continue, and I believe that monitoring was for 30 years, right? And then, it could be renewed. I, I think that was one of the subjects that came up when the state of Connecticut with DEEP had to assume the responsibilities of, what's the previous organization? CRA. And there, the state of Connecticut now has assumed those responsibilities. To my knowledge, they don't end. No one knows, really, what the future will hold as far as what may occur with regard to leaching, or degradation of the cover, or, or anything of that nature, so.
I understand, I just didn't know if you had an idea of timeline on that, just because the lease here is for 22 more years. You said it was a 30 years with the CRA and the state. It's been quite a few years that the state has already been monitoring that. I don't know how many years, but it's gotta be close to 10 now. It's been quite a few years that the state has already been monitoring that. I don't know how many years, but it's gotta be close to ten now, I would think.
Well, there was, there was money uh, in the millions, I believe, put aside, but that was not expected. I, I, my recollection is it's not expected to be enough to continue the monitoring. To a point that anyone would feel secure enough to say it doesn't need to be monitored any longer. I'm not aware of an end.
Okay, well, you're the one involved in all those meetings. So that's why I was asking if you knew. Has this contract been a, uh, and I know are probably our town attorneys have drawn it up, but have we gone to outside counsel on this? On this particular contract or are we just relying on town attorney?
Should I be insulted by that question?
No, no, because this is a different.
No, we did have outside counsel who um, has some expertise in this area, including environmental. Um, Deep is very active in this process. As you may recall, Deep is the organization that awarded. This um, project to Len Lease and um, so you have. You know, the part of Deep that's dealing with these types of projects, encouraging them to be on landfills. And I, I think there's actually a project. On the Hartford landfill, but don't hold me to that. Um, and then you have the. Side of Deep that deals with the landfill itself and they're also active in this.
So they're involved in it. So there's.
Yeah, they won't be doing anything on the property that Deep doesn't.
Well, it's not someone's deed, but it's also the contract that you'll be eventually signing for um, the benefit of the town. I assume whoever, you're the attorney, town attorney or, yes, well.
Whatever.
Operation Council, yeah.
I'm here.
Yeah, you're the one that's here. So you're the one doing it. So um. That are the interests of the town because this is a long-term contract and it's not something that you would typically. Do this type of work. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, you mean in terms of my, that's why I got outside counsel?
That's, that's, that's why I asked, did we have it? That's all, that's all. I wasn't, you know, that's all. And um. There's. Boy, I can only read my own writing. The landfill, we, are you south facing? I mean, you're gonna take advantage of the south? Is that?
As, as much as we can given the slopes there there.
And, and is it, is it benefi, is it mostly south facing for you or?
It's, it's a mix, but there is a south facing slope.
How mu, about how many acres are there of that?
I, 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 I can get back to you on that. I don't know off the top of my head.
And I think this came up at a, the last meeting, but I don't remember the answer. I do remember part of the answer. Since this is being a large array, if you use sixty acres, you're not gonna use all sixty of course, but um. If for whatever reason, your company or something happens, are there bonds gonna be held by the town? For cleaning this property up?
There is restoration requirements in the agreements, including they have to post security in year ten.
And you have, I, do you remember the numbers on that or?
No, I think I, if I remember correctly, it would be determined by an engineer's study at that time.
So, but nothing upfront. So year ten, they could walk away without?
Yeah, I think that this provision was the subject of a great deal of the negotiation and when you look at it. In its early life, there will most certainly be financing involved and whatnot and those who hold security in that are going to, they're, they're. Got a prime interest in seeing that um, you know, it does what it's supposed to be. And so I don't. The negotiation was that we felt comfortable with the ten-year mark.
I understand you feel comfortable with the ten-year, but at the ten-year mark, the place is built. Nothing against Len Lease, but something happens. The world changes. And then ten years, when those tax benefits to the holders of the bonds, the state tax, the state. Is purchasing this from what I can understand at a higher rate or make an ever-source purchase these, uh, the electricity produced at a higher rate. Just as the CRA deal was done to make it beneficial. But in year ten, when these things end, you're knowing that they're ending. If for whatever reason the world is changing, what's to stop you from walking away in year ten?
So it's, it's a twenty-year agreement.
I understand that.
The, the.
But what's to stop, if there's no bond at year one, what's to stop you from walking away in year ten if a lot of the benefits? Of. The solar array are, they sunset after, they do sunset. And the, the bondholders are gonna get back a lot of their money in the first ten years. That's why you don't, you don't need anything in the first ten. But what's to protect Wallingford at year eleven? The, the, the tenth year, nine years, eleven months. What's to protect Wallingford if. Something happens to Len Lease, you guys aren't wanting to be involved in this anymore. Things change in the world very rapidly now. What's to protect Wallingford from having that large array there if it's not producing or not beneficial to you? What's to stop you from walking away at that point?
The value of the equipment that's on the property.
That's ten years from now. It might not be worth what it is today. Or, you know, that's, that's, you know, science changes.
Well, and it's also, it's a substantial equity investment with a, with a thirty-year. Lifespan in terms of getting a return on, on the equity that's invested. So. Uh, there's still a substantial amount of value in the power purchase agreement that runs for another ten years. Uh, and the, and this is just like, you know, it's like building a building. Um, so it's, it's not something that at year ten. Is, is fully depreciated. The panels themselves have warranties between twenty-five and thirty years. Uh, from the, the types of manufacturers that we'll be buying from. Uh, called tier-one manufacturers. And the reason why we buy from those tier-one manufacturers is because we can't get uh, financing. On the tier-two or tier-three panels. So um, so, so my, my own opinion is that. Uh, there is a substantial amount of value there. Um, you know, and at, at year ten. Uh, the posting of a bond for rest, restoration is, is, is reasonable.
Well, I just hope the council takes a close look at it, just to make sure uh, Wallingford's protected. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Everybody's taller than me. Bruce Conroy, thirteen Burke Heights. I didn't really completely understand your answer to him, so I'm gonna ask you. It's really simple. If something happens, like he said, you go out of business. Who cleans it up?
Uh, Len Lease cleans it up.
What if they go out of business?
So.
Just, I'm asking you, who cleans it up?
The, the project.
Before you have to take a bond out?
Yeah, the, the project company cleans it up.
The project clean company cleans it up, takes everything out and restores the land to exactly how it was.
That's right.
Before ten years, before you put a bond in if something happens.
Well, so if, if something were to happen, there's, there's still substantial.
I don't think it's gonna, I'm just asking.
There's sub- substantial value in the power purchase agreement. There's enough value still there.
Is there a requirement to clean it up or to continue operation? Is what I mean.
I'll, I'll let Janice answer that question.
Yes, there is a require.
Excellent, cool. Um, so, and when it's all said and done after twenty years, you guys clean it up and leave and that's it? Or you continue?
Um, that would be after the thirty-fifth year.
Right.
If you stand after the twenty-two year period. So.
Answer my questions. That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
After twenty, Bob Gross Long Hill wrote, after twenty-two years, then who has the option of renewal? Is it, it has to be joint or do you have the option?
It's, it's the project.
So you have the option of going on to thirty-five years. We don't, Wallingford doesn't have a say at that particular point.
That's right.
Right. And the, and the only thing is, it's not Len Lease per se going out of business. I assume you're gonna set this up as a separate corporation.
Right.
So it's this separate entity, whether you call it Wallingford Power LLC. Not Len Lease hat, goes out of business. They can decide to just fold their carpet and walk away at any time because they're gonna open up as an LLC or however you're an LLP. However, you're gonna set up the partnership. And they can walk away at any time. That's, is your attorney, Sermoni, I'm sure you're aware. So that's why we just need to make sure Wallingford's protected. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? And I will close the public hearing and move on to item seven.
Try again, Mr. Chairman. I approve, I move, we approve the option agreement for solar energy facility ground lease. With form of ground lease for the Wallingfield property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So assume, um, I guess it's okay to assume that since I did not get a revised version. Of the document that we saw at the last meeting, that what we are voting on tonight is the document we saw at the last meeting.
Correct.
So I asked the question that I asked at the last meeting, what is the status of the? Tax agreement that's referred to in the option that we're voting on tonight?
It will not be negotiated until such time as they define the project that's actually going to be here. So, I mean, we can't make, right now, the lease calls for them to pay the taxes. Period. It's in the lease. You pay the taxes. It's to their advantage and to our advantage to have an agreement where we stabilize the value um. And have an understanding of what the value of the project is uh, over a period of time. But that will be subject to negotiation and we'll come back to the council. But until the project is defined as to what they're actually putting there, we can't. Put any numbers in front of you.
So the fact that they merely have an option at this point. To come to us with a plan in the future, that option itself is not taxable, correct? They're not utilizing the property.
It's not merely an option. It's an option agreement to lease the property with the lease that we've given you. So it's, it's. It's an option that can be exercised within a three-year period of time.
Okay, so again, let me ask the question a little differently. If this was to pass this evening, is what Len Lease is getting um, taxable?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, if they exercise, when, when they put their project there, it's taxable.
Ah, okay.
Okay, we don't tax an option agreement.
That was exactly what I said in the beginning.
All right.
Okay.
We don't tax.
Option is not taxable. So they're not. So upon passage of this, they're not paying taxes.
Correct.
On their utilization of the property because they're not utilizing the property till they come to us.
Just studying it, yes.
This is how much we're gonna use.
Yes.
Okay. So. I'm still having a problem with this because I like the financial arrangement. But. The income to the town is not gonna be higher than what we're voting on. If anything, because of the potential tax agreement, it can only be lower. They're not gonna agree to pay more taxes. Right?
Okay, but the agreement calls for them to pay the taxes. We're in a better position than they are. The agreement said if they exercise the lease with no tax agreement, they're paying the taxes, period, whatever they are.
Okay, but the, the document that, the only version of the document that we've seen.
Yeah.
Contemplates a tax, a subsequent tax agreement.
There's a reference that the parties will negotiate, look to negotiate a tax agreement.
Okay, so the only statement I made was with regard to the taxes which are a component of the option agreement that we're voting on tonight. They're gonna pay the taxes.
Right.
But.
That's good news. If they exercise the lease.
Yes, it is. But that component that is comprised of taxes can only be a lower number. Given the open-ended nature of the tax agreement that's referenced in the option. That's, that's the problem I'm having. If it wasn't in there, then I'd have to say, cool. But it's expressly re- referenced in the document that I'm being asked to vote on. So there's, there's a reliance issue, there's.
Well, the issue, the. We can't put tax dollars in front of you until they, if, if they say they're coming to come back and all they're going to lease is five acres of land. And the project is, you know, there's a certain value to what they're putting there. We don't know what that value is. But we will find out. I don't see, I don't believe they will exercise a lease agreement in all likelihood until we've negotiated. That tax agreement. I would suspect that during the option time. When they're doing all their due diligence, part of that due diligence would be whether or not there's anything we can agree to on the taxes.
So, so. Yeah, cause it's, it's part of the mosaic that makes up the whole deal. I got it. So why is it necessary for this body? To approve the lease without having that tax agreement? At this point?
Because they need to know that the deal is, is done, that they have the right to lease the property. They can't develop the project with all the, the financing and whatnot, that the equity interests is that they need to get. If they don't have a binding agreement to actually go forward with the project.
So who came to, did, did we go to them and say, we wanna negotiate the taxes or did they come to us?
The, the subject of a tax agreement was raised, I think it was prob, from the beginning and, and we view that as being. Something that we would be in favor of looking at, of negotiating.
So I guess the response to the question was, they came to us.
Ellis Power, for example.
Understood. I got it. And we did that all in one deal, right? We, we voted on the entire thing, I thought, generally at the same time. So here we have a third party coming to the town, agree to lease this property. But continue to negotiate an aspect of it. Why not just say, no, this is the lease? Uh, you know, this is the lease. I, no, because the lease expressly references a tax agreement to be negotiated. So that's part of the document. You entered into the lease?
And at the key moment in time, if we don't negotiate it.
Yeah.
If we don't agree to it.
If you don't.
Then they either take it with the taxes as is or they don't, or they walk away.
Or you, or it's alleged that you don't negotiate in good faith. I mean, all of that stuff. It's, it's expressly in the document. So that's what I'm still having a problem with. I, I just.
Well, you can't, I mean, so you're gonna, you want, let them proceed for three years. Put everything that they put into it. With the, with the town saying, well, we just may walk away because we're not getting the taxes that we wanna get.
But they're the one, I, I just, they're the ones coming to us saying we want to negotiate the tax agreement. Why don't we just, I mean, here's the lease, we sign the lease, do your thing and, and we go on. I mean. Do we normally, I mean, there's other people that develop in the town and, you know, we don't. It just seems unnatural. So I think I've beat this around enough. Um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the other option is we send them packing and um, the landfill doesn't change and. There's nothing done there and there's no potential income. So that's, that's also a possibility.
Well, we s, if I'm, we, we strike the language referencing a tax agreement from this document, we sign it.
Well, I mean, the provision says that we may, this, that the tax provision, which the taxes, they're paying the taxes, may be superseded by a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. I mean, if it's not to our liking, then we're not going to agree to it. You're not bound to agree to it.
I would just feel a lot more comfortable. I don't see why we're not, is it because they don't know how much of the property they're utilizing? Is that? You can't do a percentage? Or is that?
Percentage of what?
Of the taxes. We're talking about there's a taxed value.
Well, until they define and say what the project is, we don't, we don't have the numbers.
Understood, but you could use a percentage. So you could say, we'll give you a. Ten percent tax abatement for the first two years. I, I don't know, I'm just throwing something out there. Then it doesn't matter what the tax number is. Cause the.
Well, it could because if it's a lot of money, I mean, you, I think the percentages would become important.
But you could structure it that way too. If, if the, I mean. If the uh, taxable improvements to the property exceed a million dollars. Um, then they can have a twenty-five percent tax abatement for the fa, first five years. If it's five hundred thousand dollar, I mean, this is not, I could do this in an hour. Um, I mean, I don't understand, why can't it be part of this deal? And then we have the whole thing in front of us and then I can evaluate the finances. I just, it's a big question mark. It's open-ended. And it's only a negative to the town. I don't understand at all. So that's, I beat it again. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Letourneau.
Janice, you had something earlier that, in, in picking up on this conversation, but. If they're gonna go for financing, well, I'll ask you, if you're gonna go for financing, wouldn't whoever's financing the project wanna know what you're paying in taxes?
That's correct. Having the taxes locked down is important for the people who are gonna invest money in the project, whether it's Len Lease or, or outside. Financeers. Having that number float around, because as I understand. Having that number float around, because as I understand, what little I do understand of how property tax in Connecticut works, it can float around. And, and given some of the news that's been in the Wall Street Journal recently, I think every week there's been another article about the, the states, the state's finances. The investors, you can imagine how the investors feel about having that property tax number locked down, even though it has nothing to do necessarily with, with the state of Connecticut.
So, okay, so wouldn't that definitive number need to be in the lease, though? You just can't go to a financer and say, "Our taxes are gonna be," but you have no definitive paperwork on that?
Right, we're gonna need to have a tax agreement in order to obtain the financing for construction.
So in essence, what we're doing is we're asking them to, we're gonna present the lease with an open end on the taxes to be filled in at a later date. Yes?
Well, they have to tell us what the project consists of to come up with the value of the taxes.
Yeah, okay, so that should be done...
I mean, as soon as they have, in a position to do so, we're ready to negotiate the tax agreement.
But shouldn't that be, shouldn't that have been done before we have the, the lease?
No, because the option agreement is a three-year agreement for them to build this, not build, to build, but to design and determine the feasibility of the size of the project. And the closer they get, I don't know when that will be during that three-year period of time, then we can start talking about numbers.
But again, how can we do a lease with no numbers in it?
Lease says they're going to pay the taxes.
So all the lease does is tell, it's a guarantee to us that they will pay the taxes no matter what it is?
Right, that's what it says. Which they have legally do.
Okay, so you're gonna go to your financer and you're gonna say, "I, we've signed an agreement with the town of Wallingford and we're gonna pay the taxes no matter what they tell us what they are."
Well, I, I go to my, my investment committee every week and ask for more money. So, so right now, getting the lease option agreement in place with the, the rent and the terms and conditions around the long-term lease, that gives me the ability to ask and get the money I need to do the studies that are necessary and the permitting required as part of this major capital investment. The initial money that I put into it during the development term is significant, but it's, it's, it's not a baked cake yet. So my job is to try to de-risk the asset as best I can and turn it into a baked cake so that the big money can come in. The big money, when the big money comes in, they're gonna be looking at things like the tax agreement and how that works. I'm not gonna get the big money next week. There's a lot of work to do. This is a very technical project, it's a very complicated project, and it's gonna require a lot of dollars upfront during the development term that are gonna be at risk to figure out how we can make it work. Getting this lease option agreement in place is a huge step towards, towards that goal. But, but like I said, I'm not gonna be able to take it into construction next week or even in six months.
So if we do this tonight, and we would have to come back at it again to do an amended lease when the, when the actual figures come in?
You don't need to amend the lease, it would be like you've done other types of tax agreements. It's not, you don't need to do that. You don't need to amend the lease. You'll just, you'll agree to a tax agreement or not at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thank you.
There was some discussion of the LS Power agreement. And as I recall, the, what seemed to me to be different about LS Power is that when they came before us with that project, they had decided what apparatus they were gonna use to generate power. They had chosen a GE turbine, gas-powered engine that they were going to use to generate electricity so that we knew. And, and it was with some level of finality. There were the number of units that they were going to use. So I, I think their project had already been engineered in terms of what the, the power generation product was going to be, the taxable, potentially taxable property. So I, I do see a difference there between the situation and the LS Power situation.
I mean, the approval at this time is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, crucial to the project moving forward, is my understanding.
See your hand, Counselor Fishbein, anybody else before Counselor Fishbein, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's, that's generally where I wanted to go, because like a couple of weeks ago when we were here, you know, we looked at the agreement, we generally polled the council, "Are you comfortable with it?" You know, there was affirmation from almost all of us. Am I to understand that absent a signature from the town on this document, that you cannot go forward? Is that what I'm to understand? Or is it the same sort of situation, that we say, "We're generally okay with this." You know, "Good luck, we'll see you in a, in a few." Is that good? I just, I don't know, which is it?
So, so I'm not in a world of, I wish I was, I were in a more black and white world, but I could probably put about 80% certainty on me not getting any more money to do what I need to do to figure this project out if I don't have a signature.
Okay, would you, is it crucial that the reference to the tax agreement be in the, in the current option? Because it's certainly not relevant to the option.
You know, I, I think, I believe Janice read, read the phraseology. It's something about may have a tax agreement. I don't see that as critical to the agreement. It's nice to have. But I do want to point out that, that for me to get the big dollars to build the project, I will need to have a tax agreement. I will need to have that number locked in, in the financials. It's not something that can float around on a project like this to get the dollars that I'm looking to get. But like I said, it's not a, it's not a critical item to have in the agreement.
So that's, and I appreciate all of that, but it, it raises the concern that with regard to the tax agreement, at some point in the future, this body's feet are gonna be held to the fire. You know, I guess you end up with a, a signature and putting a lot of capital into the, the property or into plans. I mean, I, I guess you have to look at whether or not you walk away from the project if there isn't a tax agreement, but you know, time and time, well, sometimes, we end up with the, "You have to do this, your feet are being held to the fire." And that's, that's of concern, because, you know, I guess for the purposes of tonight, Janice is, I mean, if, if I was to make a motion to strike the reference to the tax agreement from the document, is that okay?
Well, you know, first let me say, I think, you know, you think your feet is being held to the fire. I think we're actually in the stronger position here on this point, but you know, be that, I'm not gonna argue with you anymore on that. I know that, you know, the bold last sentence of the tax section was important to their council. I, I think you can leave this sentence that says, "This provision may be superseded by a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the parties," it's a "may," and take the last section out, last sentence out, that's in the dark bold, which would be, "These provisions are subject to the ongoing discussions regarding a tax agreement relating to the lease premises." I'm not sure what their council's...
Can you get a page reference?
Oh, sure. Page six of the lease. So, you know, that's not language, obviously, that we put in there, but that was language that their attorney wanted in there. And, you know, I, myself and our outside counsel viewed this as to be a stronger paragraph for us, so... But you want to take that last sentence out, then see what happens.
Yeah, well, let's see what, so I guess as a, I, I would like to make a motion to strike that one sentence. I just, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we're in the middle of dealing with a motion, so how would you like me to handle that?
It would be an amendment to the motion to approve the agreement. It would be subject to your, your amendment would be to strike the sentence.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to strike the bolded sentence on page six as referenced by Attorney Small regarding the discussions of a tax agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the council. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Chertel?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Testa?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
No.
Motion fails.
Pass? She said pass?
Okay, that was, so there's no amendment to the motion on the table. And if there's no further discussion on the council, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Sorry. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got what you need.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Onto item 11, which is discussion regarding the projected surplus for 2016, 2017 fiscal year. Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you, you all know, I sent a letter through the town clerk slash council secretary to Mr. Boz with regard to proposed surplus, and I expect that everybody got a copy of the response there, too. So I guess to Mr. Boz, do we have any idea how much this, do we have an idea first if there's gonna be a surplus?
We really don't start that work until the summertime, actually July-ish, August.
So you can't even tell this body whether there's going to be a surplus? Dollar one?
We believe there's gonna be a surplus, yes.
Okay. Do we know, have any idea whether the surplus is gonna be in excess of $1 million?
In excess of how much?
$1 million?
I, no, I cannot say that.
Okay. So at the last meeting, we talked about there was at least an overage in the pension of $250,000 was the projection.
Correct.
And the accrued contingency expenses was $200,000.
Correct.
And I think there was another reference to a, an account that, at least at that point, was showing a surplus. Do you recall what that was?
I believe it was the contingency, the general contingency.
Okay, and I think that was $60,000?
I believe 50 to 60 at that time.
Yeah, okay. And my understanding is that currently there is a, we took in more revenue than we had anticipated?
Well, in certain items, we did, in certain items, we were lacking. Certain state grants came in less than what was budgeted. They've been reduced during the year or after the council adopted the budget last May. Obviously, we all know of the state's fiscal issues, so there, there are some there.
And you, you have no idea whether that exceeds, that difference is...
Not a tax, tax difference will exceed that. The tax, I was just gonna continue on by saying, the tax collections have been, have been quite good, thankfully.
Yeah, so you have no idea whether or not the additional revenue over and above what was budgeted for last year
At this point, it's, I would say it's somewhere in that general vicinity.
Okay. So just looking at those four lines, that's $1 million? So, the four lines that we just talked about?
I think you're looking at just budget compared to what's actually happened. And, and the surplus or the deficit isn't determined that way. It's determined by what you actually make in revenue versus what you actually spend, what comes in versus minus what goes out. So budget at that point in time, really frankly, is, is, is not the focus, is not of, of the financial statements. It's what actually happened.
But, but...
Almost like, almost like your business. I mean, if you bring in more revenues at the firm and you subtract out your expenses, you had a better year. Your retained earnings would increase. If the opposite came true, obviously, your retained earnings would decrease.
And I know on a monthly basis whether or not I'm gonna have a surplus or a deficit projected at the end of the year, but...
Well, if, if I may, and I really hate to keep blaming the state, and I know folks are getting tired of hearing that, but it's, it's the truth of the matter. As a matter of fact, I was having a conversation, if you don't mind me stating this, with Councilman Letourneau. The day before, we received about, I, I believe the day after, if I remember, John. We received the last, well, we received a, a payment from the state of Connecticut on a grant, municipal revenue sharing. There's a long history to that grant, I won't bother you with the boring details, but that grant was threatened to be cut as early, as currently as May 15th, May 20th, from what we are being told by a couple of organizations, including the, the COG and CCM, et cetera. If that, and that was a very large grant, $1.9 million. If that did not come true, we were talking probably an operating deficit this fiscal year, ending June 30th. So the brittleness and the, and the frailty of what's happening is, is really alarming with, with regards to it. But, but it's, it's the amounts this time. It's, you know, sometimes we haven't gotten, every municipality hasn't gotten everything that they've budgeted with regards to state grants. But now it's the, the severity is the, is the dollar amount. But that money did come in luckily and we were obviously happy to get it.
Okay, so that's the sky is falling that never falls. But the, in the correspondence to you, understand that you can't tell us actually how much the surplus was or is going to be in three days. But we know that it's at least $1 million. And then I asked you for what accounts does it originate? So you're unable to answer that for the same reason?
Correction.
Okay, when do we anticipate knowing what the surplus is and what accounts it originates from?
Well, well, let me answer that. We'll know that when the, when the, when the audit comes out.
Okay, well...
Because we're not gonna put ourselves at risk guessing at what might come out and have audit come out with something different and then try to explain the difference. We wait for the audit as we have every year.
Okay, that, that might be a political position, but it's a factual question. So the professional comptroller was asked when we would know. I mean, are we, we never know until the audit comes out? We have some idea.
That is the official answer for the town of Wallingford, the result of the audit.
Okay, and when is the audit anticipated to be released?
Usually the middle of December.
Okay. And so am I to understand, because at the last meeting, we were told that at the end of the fiscal year, any money that isn't spent is automatically swept into reserves. So what can this body do to stop that action? Since we don't know what the number is till December?
My recollection of that was that there was a question from an audience member about moving the funds into the pension plan by June 30th. My response was, "I'd like to do that in June. This way it is included in the amount of assets that our actuaries use to determine next year's contribution levels as well as, you know, the unfunded liability."
Okay, but I'm being, I'm being told that sometime in December, third party tells us we have X number of dollars in the bank that is surplus as a result of 2016 through 2017. At that point, where is that money?
That money is in what is called the fund balance.
Okay, how did it?
Of the general.
How did it get to the fund balance or the general fund?
The fund balance is an accumulation of surpluses, operating surpluses and operating deficits from the beginning of time through the balance sheet date, which is June 30.
Okay, so is there an action that moves that money from the accounts that this body appropriates it to, in effect, to the fund balance?
No, there's no action.
Okay.
It's just the closing of the books.
So actually, it doesn't go into the fund, but there is no physical act? It's still in those accounts? Because you don't transfer, you don't say, you know, here's $1.6 million, here's a check, here's a.
There's no physical closing out of every free penny or dollar in every line item, no.
So it isn't?
What happens is we, when everything is said and done, we get our audited results, we have, make sure we concur with what the auditors or state post any entries that they may have made to our books. Then what happens is it gets posted in summary to our balance sheet to bring that up to date, up to current. But no, there's no manual going through every single line item, you know, closing out accounts, no. It happens in its totality after the audit is completed. Or I should say, as the audit is completed.
But there is no physical act?
Well, there doesn't have to be.
Well, why not? Well, why wouldn't there be? If, if at the beginning of the fiscal year, you fund the town clerk's office supplies account, right? You put $10,000 in it, and you only expend $8,000 during the year. And you don't transfer out the $2,000 to general, right?
No, that's correct.
It's still in that account line?
No, because see, what happens is that year gets closed out, and no one can go in there and post anything. No one can.
When does the year get closed out?
When, when we receive the audit and we concur with that, we post entries, we make sure we agree with the auditor's numbers as well. And that's when we close.
But wait a second, why would you have to agree with the accountant, the auditors, when you can't state what the?
Sometimes.
Numbers are to begin with, that we only rely upon the audit in making determinations? So now the audit comes back, and then we have to see if we agree with it, so why not just?
For example, there could be an expenditure that gets charged to the wrong year. It doesn't happen often, but that can happen. Something to that effect.
Okay, and when's the last time that happened?
Well, closing entries, audit entries, I believe they happen every fiscal year.
Okay, so that's the auditors find something wrong, or?
If there's something of materiality, if they will, and we will post, that's correct.
Okay, based upon what they find?
Correct.
Not that you find something wrong with the audit?
Correct.
Okay, so there's nothing for you to agree to with the audit?
Correct.
In fact, the audit never even comes to us for approval. We never approve the audit.
Well, you get the audit when it's released, right?
But you've never seen this body address approving of the audit?
That's, you're correct.
Yeah. Never happened. So is it possible for this body to say that a certain amount will not be swept into the general reserves?
I think it's an incorrect action or that you're talking. There is, like I said, sweeping into reserves. So I guess the only answer I could give is no. I mean, like I said, we don't sweep anything, and we close the fiscal year out by changing the fund balance, if you will, based upon the actual events that occurred during the year.
Okay.
The ultimate result.
So at the end, sometime in December, beginning of December, let's say, there's $20 million in the fund balance. I know it's a lower number, but just to use around. And in the middle of December, when you get the report from the auditors, and it says you have $1.8 million more, then you raise the fund balance to 21.8?
That's correct.
Okay. So at that point, you have a number. Is it possible that this body could say that any number lower than $2 million will be held in escrow or held somewhere and not put in there until this body addresses it?
No, I, I know of no mechanism to do that, no.
Or is there any preclusion? Is there anything that stops that from happening?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. So I did ask, is there any other things that could be done with? Well, that's the only thing that could happen at that point. Either it goes to the reserves or it goes to the, or it's held. So all accounts go, none are held at all? No, no accounts hold the balance from year to year?
Correct. There's no rolling of an account balance in the general fund, because the general fund by law must close. Unfortunately, things don't stop on a dime on June 30th, because there's transactions in July and August which reflect upon the old fiscal year, which is why, you know, you can't really close books down until September, if you will.
So every account line in the book at the end of the fiscal year is zeroed out and started fresh?
The legal document is the new budget 1718 with every line item that you folks saw during this year's process.
Okay, the question was, at the end of the fiscal year, is every line in the budget zeroed out to start a new, fresh year?
No, because they're two separate and succinct documents.
Okay.
In other words, in the example that you alluded to before, the town clerk's, picking on the poor town clerk, but the town clerk's line item for her office supplies, $10,000. She spends $8,000, like you said in your example, and it was fiscal year ended '16. I could, we could actually go back in there and still see that $2,000 unspent. So there's no moving of an amount anywhere. Now, there's nowhere, there's no way that anybody could post anything to that year.
But in December, that $2,000 is going to, as a, as a component of surplus, is gonna go to the general fund?
In, not in and by itself, but in, in, in.
In the lump.
In a lump sum with everything else, correct.
Everything that wasn't expended.
That's correct.
So in effect, because at the end of the year, it sets the time place, right? It's locked in. Whatever's left is gonna be audited and accumulated. And then in December, in effect, that's, that's all swept.
That's correct.
So every single account in the budget book is treated that way?
Yes.
Okay, so how does, for example, the Public Celebrations Committee claim that they have an ongoing surplus?
Well, we, they are funds that they have not spent since the beginning of their creation through a certain point in time. So they might have leftover town funds that we have sent them over the years that they did not spend.
Key to that is their account is not a town of Wallingford account. They have their own bank account. It's the only, only board or commission that has its own bank account.
Okay, so that would be one example where is totally contrary to what you said, not all lines in the budget book are swept at the end of the year.
There's nothing left in their account at the end of the year to sweep anywhere. They're paid their allotment either once or twice a year. I don't recall how we treat that separate commission, but there's zero, there's a zero balance in that line item, in the social services balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Their line item doesn't reflect the money that they have as a result of other money from other years. They hold that in a separate bank account.
But.
So they, they could have spent all of the money in the account that we show for them, and they will still have money that has accumulated over years and is a, is a reserve that they use.
Okay, and I think I asked maybe two years ago, never got a response, about any other entity, anybody else in that budget book that is treated in that fashion? Is there anybody else who, because that's very unusual?
They are. They are very unique. However, there was a time, and I'd have to go back and look at it if you wanted me to follow up. I, I will, just if you don't mind giving me a little bit of time. There was a few years back where they had a little bit of a surplus, because there was an event that was canceled due to weather, I believe. And as a result, they did not expend all of their, of that year's allocation.
The question two years ago, and I would expect this would have been enough time, was is any other entity treated in that fashion of the town?
The social service contributions that we make are allocated either monthly, like to the library. We send the library their money monthly, their total budget allocation.
Yeah, that's different. You, you don't, my understanding is that, at least the Public Celebrations Committee, they get a lump sum, check, it's on a month.
That's correct, yeah.
So.
And that's their money. Again, they do their own banking.
It's taxpayers' money, but.
Well, they also have some donations and sales that they, probably small, but they do have some.
Okay.
Or they had in the past. I don't know if they are.
Is any other entity handled in that fashion from the town?
To my knowledge, sitting here today, I can't think of one, no.
Okay. The. Okay, so I know the chairman usually likes motions, and that's for the orderly conduct of a meeting. But based upon where we are and considering, you know, December, and we don't usually get to deal with this stuff, I make a motion that when the administration finds out the amount of the surplus from the 2016-2017 fiscal year, that it notify the council within 48 hours of finding that out. And that that money is, the allocation of that money is addressed at a council meeting following that notice.
A motion without any power.
Without any power. Why not?
We can't direct the administration to do that.
Why not?
We can't direct them to do that.
Okay.
We're, we're a body, as you refer to us, that's created by law and by the charter. And our power to do things is defined. We don't have the power to direct the administration.
I understand, you know, I mean, I understand that I was gonna get friction and walls, but.
Really?
Well, that's. Because, you know, certainly we could vote on the item, and the mayor can decide not to be cooperative in the intent of the body. I mean, but we're the ones that appropriate the money. We could do a resolution, which has really no effect either, but we have done resolutions before. So while, you know, you might say that it's ceremonial, I think it's important. And I think that, you know, perhaps in December, the, the position is that we can't direct the administration what to do with the money. But certainly at the last meeting, I think we were browbeaten a little bit in that we've never given direction as to, you know, fully funding the pension as, as directed as opposed to the calculation from the actuary. When I get browbeaten, I like to deal with it. So I made the motion, and, you know, if it's not a second, we go on. Well, I'm gonna second it for discussion. We already discussed it prior to the second, but I think it's appropriate to do that anyhow.
There is a motion and a second. Attorney Small, what, if anything, can this motion accomplish?
Well, this body can't. I take what you're looking to do is, is to decide to appropriate money down the road. You don't have the power to appropriate by yourself. I mean, you could at budget time make changes to the budget, but in order to appropriate monies that haven't been appropriated, you need the recommendation of the mayor, and then the council approves it. You need both of that. So I, I'm not sure if that's what you're. I mean, I think you're looking to have that conversation at a later date, but it would be, you would need both bodies in order to accomplish such an appropriation outside of the budgetary process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just looking to have a discussion.
Okay.
That's it. It's all the motion asks for. Direction and a discussion.
Counselor Testa?
Yes, just for clarification's sake? Your motion again?
Upon the, yeah, be better.
Just wanna make sure I know what.
I might have it. When the adminis, the motion is for when the administration finds out the amount of the surplus for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, they notify the council of the amount within 48 hours. I'm sorry, they notify the council within 48 hours of the surplus amount, and the council meets to discuss.
Okay. Given that it's a motion, and if it was approved, it would imply an action. The wording is important, because we can't approve something that can't be enforced. So it may seem like something little, but the motion should, should specify that the council requests of the administration that information. Because the way it's written, it implies it's gonna happen. And then we've, so I can't vote on something that can't happen.
I would accept as a friendly amendment.
It just simply has to request the administration for somewhere in there. If that makes sense, and I have no problem with that. It's, that's, you know, a sense of the council, or the word I'm looking for, you know? Wish of the council, whatever you wanna call it. I'll just make one other point. We, we know, it's, I hope we all understand, I think we do, that nothing can be appropriated or moved or without a request from the administration that comes to us. So just as we might wish to direct the allocation or the use of funds at a certain point in time, rather than allow them to go into the reserve fund, we can, at any time, we also can request of the administration the use of some of the money in the reserve fund at any time. They may not wanna do it, but it'd end up having the same effect. So what I'm getting at is, for example, I'm looking down the road, I know we're gonna be talking about community pool, and we're talking about other things that could, may require, you know, capital expenditure. We could say, gee, I'd like to earmark the surplus this year, if it, if we get one, to this type of thing. And then all sorts of arguments about, the mechanics might come into, into play. You know, we, the money has to lapse into here, it has to do this. But when the time comes to need that money, we can, by the same, just the same way, request, make a motion that we use some of the money in the, in the reserve fund for that purpose. It obviously is gonna require the administration to go along with it and to ask us to do it. But in effect, it's, we're in the same boat, you know what I'm getting at? But I, I can appreciate, in this instance, your desire to do things a little differently. Maybe you have an opportunity to weigh in a little bit near the end of the fiscal year or whatever. So the request of the administration, to me, sounds reasonable. I have no problem. So, the request of the administration, to me, sounds reasonable. I have no problem with that. Thanks.
So, in my experience, we typically get the audit sometime closer to the end of the year. Typically after Christmas, in my experience, and to expect the council to call a meeting within forty-eight hours during that week is probably a bit of a challenge. Not to mention the fact that this being an election year, at that time, who knows who's gonna be sitting in the council the week following that? So, I just raise those points as practical matters. Counselor Laffin.
Counselor Fishman, is the intent to get a preview or heads up to what the expected surplus is before the audit? Or you just want to discuss it once we have the audited numbers?
I would have loved, I mean, I would have thought that we'd have some idea about the surplus since we're three days away from the end of the fiscal year tonight. But I'm being told we don't know the, well, I'm being told that we have no idea about the actual number until December. So, in good faith, I'm saying that in December, the intent is that in December, within a reasonable period of time, that we find out what the surplus was. Because I gotta tell you, quite frankly, until about four years ago, I didn't know about, you know, the surplus and all of this stuff, you know? So, you know, certainly there's not an official announcement. So, that's one intent. And then just having us discuss, you know, we don't know where the state's gonna be. We don't know what other things we're gonna be talking about at that time. And I'm just looking to work together instead of having to, like, bang my head up against the wall to get information and cooperation and, you know, because this is all gonna start to head in a very bad direction. So, the intent is to work together ultimately.
So, I guess I wanna, I wanna understand better what the goal of the motion is to do different than when we get the audit number?
Well, it's to perhaps talk about where that money could go. Because we were recently told that it just goes into reserves, and we have nothing to do with it, even though we're the bad guys that don't direct the funding of the pension as authorized in the budget, as an example. Just wanna have the, you know, because if I'm...
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, if, if we already kinda get the report through the audit, can we do at that time what Counselor Testa was suggesting? And just say, well, we'd like to make, we'd like to just, now that we know the number, and it's been put in the general fund, we'd like to make a request to discuss spending some of the money out of the general fund? Are you, are you trying to stop it before it actually hits the general fund?
Yeah. That's, that's actually...
Is that any different than going to the general fund and then us trying to spend it from the general fund? So, I'm just trying to understand where...
The, first of all, we...
This is, this is an accounting effect. When the budget comes to an end, money not...
It's built over.
It is, it's an automatic thing. It's now part of fund balance. It's accounting rules. We follow accounting rules, which we better stick with accounting rules. Otherwise, we have no rules for operating our finance at all. The accounting rules visit the report of that money as in a fund balance. Is that correct? So, I mean, there's no stopping it from going anywhere. Once it isn't spent, the budget year comes to an end. What isn't spent is fund balance. A new budget has been put in effect. That new budget typically does use reserves. As you know, we have reserves now being absorbed for use in the seventeen, eighteen budget. So, now we go through the process of what's, what's now allocated, what isn't. And you can come up with an amount of money that isn't allocated. And then we talk about how much of that should go toward the next budget to offset the tax. I mean, there's, there's not a mystery to this. It's happened over and over and over again. But at the core of it is, we follow government accounting. Those rules dictate where the money appears and how we report it. That's not something Jim Boz comes up with on his own. We're supposed to obey the GAAP rules.
But what Jim Boz said was that we don't know what the number is. We have no idea about the number until the audit comes out. So, if we don't know what that number is, then we can't address discussing something with that money. I'm hearing alternatively that we know about the number in August.
You know, we're playing games with semantics here, and I'm getting a little weary of it. We are not reporting guessing, guestimating what it might be. We follow a practice of waiting for the audit. The audit is an independent, objective review of the town's finances. I think that's very important. I am aware of reports from other municipalities where they thought this, they thought that, suddenly they'd say, oh gee, we have a deficit. We haven't had that here, and I think it's because we follow certain procedures. So, at the point we have an independent review of our finances and have that report in hand, that takes away the guessing, well, I think it's this, I think it's that. I like the public to rest assured that we're telling you this number, but guess what? Independent, objective experts have reviewed this, and they say this number is there too. Otherwise, who's at risk? Well, certainly, the administration is at risk if we said it's gonna be one number and it turns out to be another. There's no reason to have to do that, and I think it, it just creates problems.
I don't disagree. I was taking the word for it. It just seemed like you were saying something counter. That's all.
No, you were...
The motion deals with December, which was the representation. We don't know what the number is. But as far as the sweeping, what Mr. Boz said was that we increase the fund balance in December by that number. So, that's all. I'm taking that representation as being gospel.
No, he didn't say that it increases in December. We have the report.
He did say that. He said that, I said, the scenario was just twenty million dollars in reserves on December 1. At some point during the month, you get the audit. The audit says what the surplus is, and let's just say it's 1.8 million. And on the books, you say the reserves are now 21.8 million. That's, and he agreed. I, I don't, I mean, are we saying something different now?
The report is as of June 30th. But we don't... It doesn't happen in December. The report dictates what the fund balance was.
You guys have gotta get your stories together. I mean, when do we...
Are you gonna listen to me, or would you like to just keep talking? For the benefit of... I won't try to talk.
Of the record, one of you should speak at a time.
When do we, I mean, we'll start from the beginning. When do we know what the, when the, what the surplus is?
We know at the point we have an independent report from the auditor that as of June 30th, it's not as of December 20th, it's not as of December 30th. As of June 30th, the fund balance, the results of the, the revenue collected, the expenditures, all of the town's finances, the results are of June 30th.
That's what we've said.
That is the expert telling us in December what the results were for June 30th.
We talked about, I don't know, I guess I was at a different meeting. We talked about the fiscal year ending on June 30th, that the auditors are doing their work, that they issue their report in December. Obviously, it has to do with the end of the fiscal year in June. I didn't say anything differently. So, I don't know what you're saying, quite frankly.
You were indicating that we were playing a game about not knowing, having any idea about what the surplus would be.
Well, I...
And it's the having an idea...
I sent a letter, and the response was...
Having an idea about it is what concerns me. I'd like to have something certain, and that is what the auditors provide.
Okay, but I tried to ask questions at the beginning. Is the surplus gonna be in excess of a million dollars? And I couldn't even get an answer to that. So...
Because all of that is guessing.
Okay. Just those four lines.
What if that turns out to be wrong?
I don't know. But anyway, I made a motion. I think the motion deals with December, which is what the representation was. And just wanna have a discussion if there's gonna be cooperation. So...
Counselor Testa.
Okay, I'll let us get to a vote, but here's the way I see it. The information you want, you won't be able to get because no one will... And I'm not criticizing this. No one's gonna go on record until the auditors say it's so. So, in order to do what you'd like to do in December, we'd have to then go back in time and do it in June. See where I'm going? Because in December, they're gonna tell you what it is in June. And then what you wanna do is, you won't be able to. Because, but we can still talk about that amount of money and do what I said. It's, we know what it is. That's really what it's gonna be about. It's gonna be about the spirit of things. We know that a certain amount of money was left over, and it's in the fund balance and has been since June. But it allows us to earmark it and refer to it in certain ways, just as we've tried to do when it comes to budget time. Let's take the two million from last year's surplus. We're talking about a certain amount of money, and we can at least identify where it came from. And it allows us to speak about it in a certain spirit, as opposed to arbitrarily choosing dollar amounts, you know, out of the fund. That's basically it.
Counselor Laffin, you had the floor. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was, I was kinda gonna say what Counselor Testa just said. I think we're gonna, we're not gonna get a number any different than what the audited number is in December. And I think the audit is basically, is, is reporting or announcing officially what the number has been since June. And that number, by accounting practice, automatically goes into the general fund. So, once you know the number, if you're interested in spending that money at that time, then I think it would be appropriate just to put it on the agenda for discussion. But I don't think anything's gonna change with this motion affect what happens.
I'm just concerned because, you know, the number of what the surplus was, was it last year or the year before? There was like six months of bantering by various groups, you know? It's this number, the audit says it's this number, and I just, it's, you know, very difficult. I mean, we, we know, sitting here tonight, that the surplus is more than likely gonna be in excess of a million dollars. And, you know, I think we should be having discussions, but I understand the friction, so...
Mr. Boz, did you, were you trying to get my attention? Or was that pretty small, or were you arguing for my attention?
We're fighting over who's to go first, but anyway. When you're talking about, I guess I'm a little puzzled as to what the overall goal is, like Councilman Laffin said. But when you're talking about utilizing more reserves to sweep into some other type of function or account or destination, whatever you wanna do with it, those funds are spent, they're gone from the general fund. Now, when we build our budget based upon, which starts a couple of months later, and you folks start, you know, with the public hearing and whatnot in April, a few months after that, those funds that aren't spent, that are part of those reserves are brought forward into that upcoming budget process. So, if you sweep it out, there's gonna be less to use in that upcoming budget process. Now, that'd be a problem, you know, that you'd end up having ultimately, depending upon the amounts. Not if you use smaller amounts and things of that nature, but, and if I may, throw an example at you. The current process, or the current budget process the two folks just went through contains 7.2 million dollars of use of reserves to balance the budget, right? Well, that actually comes from the audited reserves of 22. some odd million. I'm rounding the numbers a little bit, of what we call the free fund balance, which is undesignedated. There's no encumbrances, there's no appropriations force against those, or the 1% fund for the Board of Ed. That's all free and legal to use. We try to reserve about 10% to remain, to try to retain a strong credit rating and for anything else that might come down the pike. Well, that's around 15 point something million dollars. That left us with about seven million, 7.2 million dollars. That's the amount that you're seeing in your upcoming, in the budget that you just passed for 17, 18. So, my fear is that, and I, if, if there's a goal out there of something that folks want to maybe try to do, maybe let me know, let the mayor know, and maybe some options could be presented. You know what I mean? I would just hate to disturb the flow of what's been working here for a long time. You know, I understand what you're saying, and you're possibly, maybe, unless I'm reading you incorrectly, is that you wanna put some of the surplus funds to work rather than just sitting in a reserve account. I don't, I don't know, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm not asking for a response, I'm just... But if that's, that is the goal, in essence, you are doing that, and you're doing that with the upcoming budget. Now, I'm not saying that to try to prevent you from trying to present something to the office of the mayor. Hey, can we use up to a certain amount of reserves from the last fiscal year to do this? You just wanna do that as a body? I mean, that's between you and his honor. But I'm just saying from, from the way Wallingford has done this for many years now, it was long before Jim Boz got here. But was that, those funds are brought into play in the upcoming budget cycle. So, therefore, and I know there's been, and I know some folks have been, after all, nine of you folks, or eight of you folks, to say, well, get your projections this fiscal year during the budget process so we can use even more. That's, that's, that's a horrible way to go. We've, we've seen that at the municipal level, of course, at the state level, even businesses. But I think if, if, if there is something else that's on the minds of council members, maybe contact or speak to the chairman and send it through the mayor, and maybe we could present the options. I don't know if that's where you were trying to go. I'm not sure, but I'm a little lost as to, you know, what the overall is, so, thank you.
Attorney Small, did you...
I'll shut up now.
Did you still want to say something?
Sure. I... Knock it off. I'm being threatened. If I'm understanding this conversation correctly, I think that there's, there seems to be some concern that, that there's an event that prevents you, once the audit is done, from looking to do an appropriation, you know, with the approval of the mayor, that there's an event that will block it? And if I'm understanding that correctly, there isn't. So, it, it sounds like, and maybe I'm misinterpreting, but it sounds like you're thinking that there's an event that happens between now and then that makes it either more difficult or impossible for you to do. And I don't believe that that's the case. So, when you get your audit and you want to, what is basically an appropriation above the budget, you would be having a conversation with the mayor, would the mayor recommend it, and then the council would approve it? So, if, if, if I'm understanding correctly that you think there's a triggering event between now and then that could prevent that from happening, there isn't. I don't know if that makes any sense, but...
That's, that's basically what I was saying just before.
Yeah, but I said it shorter.
A lawyer says...
And I took no detours. I didn't talk about the weather in the middle of it.
I mean, from an attorney, coming from an attorney, I find that laughable.
All right. That's just going nowhere good. Counselor DeTerno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a couple of things in play here. It's, you know, we're talking about what we can do with the money, moving it. But I think the intent of this, going back to the original motion, the intent of the motion was to keep the dialogue open. Maybe not so much as move, you know, where we're gonna move the money around, but to wait from the end of the fiscal year, six months, to get the official audit. I understand what an official audit is. That's the number that's been vetted. But to wait six months? And I know there's government accounting practices. I'm fully aware of that. But if I ran my business on this, I'd be in some serious trouble with these accounting practices. You know, I, with my business, I could tell you on any given day where I am, whether it's a profit or a loss. And all we're looking for is to keep the dialogue open. We're not asking for, Jim, is this, is this the amount, what amount do we have? What's the, but what's the projected amount? Give us a ballpark as we go along. And Mayor, I understand, you know, I understand what you're saying with the audit and I agree with you on that. That's the audited amount. That is, but why do we need to wait till December? I don't get it.
I'm amazed we're having this conversation with what's afflicting the state and any number of other governmental institutions. I think the public deserves reassurance that what we're saying financially is correct. What we've seen is projections and guestimates and estimates across the board and most of them have turned out to be wrong at other layers of government. We are not gonna start that here as far as I'm concerned. Because I don't think there's any, there's only, there's no goal in mind. It's empty talk. We can say, oh gee, I think there'll be five million. What would we do with five million dollars? Oh, oh, that's a nice discussion, but so what? So we'll take four hours and talk about, well, if it were five million dollars, what might we do? And then the next meeting, we could talk about, well, maybe it'll only be three million. It's pointless. But I am concerned about the principle that we would envision spending in some way money that we aren't sure is there by direction, report from an auditor and expect the public to believe that we're doing this in their interest. I can't sit here and, I don't feel that's in their interest. I think we need to act credibly. We need to act with constraint. We need to be reassuring to people. This is their money. And yes, in a business, you can do it. It's your money. We are trustees over the public's money. That means you have to have a very prudent level of conduct. You have to act in a prudent manner at all times. And when we start talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, and not being able to point to with surety what it is, where we're getting it, and that we are indeed positive that it is there. I couldn't act as a trustee and do that over someone's estate. I'm certainly not gonna do that as mayor of a community that depends upon all of our collective judgments wisely managing the public assets. We do what we do, not just because it's fun or because it's always been done. We do it because there's sound reason for it. And you stray off that straight and narrow path and the fall is sharp and quick, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, may I finish?
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor, I agree with you. We are the stewards, we are the stewards also of the town's money, the nine of us plus you. And it is a responsibility to come out to the public and talk about, keep the dialogue open. Nobody up here, I'm gonna stretch on this, but I can bet nobody up here is willing to spend projected funds. But we wanna know, we wanna know where this money at the end of the fiscal year. We just wanna know, keep the dialogue open. We don't wanna wait until the audit, the official audit in December. I would like to know in September. I would like to know in October. And any department head should be able to tell you by then whether their bills are paid and what kind of surplus they've got, projected surplus. Not an audited surplus, but a projected surplus, just so we get to know, and especially in these times of uncertainty with the state. More so than any time in the history of this town or the history of the state is, is this year of uncertainty. That's why we're asking the questions and that's where the public has the right to know. That's all, I think that's all we're doing. We just wanna keep the dialogue open and not do business the way business has been done in the town just because it's been done that way for the last thirty years, twenty years, or whatever it was. It might have worked, but it was a different time. And I think it's time just to be a little bit more progressive and a little bit more dialogue. People wanna know what's going on. That's all, just information. I know I'm not looking to spend, I won't spend dime one on a projected surplus. Absolutely not. Can't do that. But we, we have the right to know. We have that right to know with that projected surplus.
We don't project a surplus. That's the bottom line. And at the point, at the point we know it, I don't know it ahead of time. Make no effort to try to guess at it.
So you don't know until, until the auditor gives you the number?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't ask ahead of time and once we have it, then we start dealing with what the needs on the budget are. You know, I, I got sick and tired of reading in the papers about it was a projected surplus for the state. Then it was a projected deficit. Then, no, it's a surplus again. You could have had fifteen discussions month by month about what it might be and in the final analysis, it turned out it was a deficit. What was the point of all those discussions? Every month, a comptroller and the OPM comes out with a report, oh, it's going this way, it's going that way. What is the point to that? That, the public wonders if anyone knows what's going on. You know, you can have a lot of discussion, but the discussion goes nowhere because there's no certainty. It's just talk.
At this point, I throw my hands in the air. I'm done. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
I don't know where to start. But I could be here for an hour, but I don't wanna be because I've already lost an hour and a half in my life that I'll never get back. We're having a discussion, to have a discussion at the end of December when none of us will probably be here anyway. Look, it's just, I just don't get it. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar budget in this fiscal year, right? And I'll tell you what, in the business world, if I came in with a surplus of a million or two million, I'd be hailed a hero and they'd erect a statue of me outside of AT&amp;T. It's such a small percentage of the overall budget. And, you know, honestly, when I wanna have a discussion with the mayor, I go knock on his door. Or I see Jim Bose like I did earlier this week. I go right to see him. I don't, I'm not gonna sit here in front of the cameras for two hours and, and talk about something we have absolutely no authority over. None, none. We wanna have a discussion? We can have discussions. We have no authority to tell him how to spend money. And you know that. I, I'm just sitting here for an hour and a half listening and my mind is blown. We are having discussions that very few towns were able to have around surpluses. We have GAAP accounting procedures that we have done for years. Yeah, we've done them for years. We're putting seven million dollars from our fund balance into the 2017, 2018 budget. And thank God we had that money because if we didn't, the citizens of this town would be facing a very large tax increase. I know people will say, we're overtaxed, we're overtaxed. But when you look at it, from outside a government, from a business side, a million, two million dollar surplus, you know, under budget, over budget, man, that's a good number. That is a real good number. And I'll take that to the bank any day. You know, Randall Stevenson is right now the president of AT&amp;T, but I'll bet you if he gave me the budget and I came in those numbers, he'd step aside and let me take over. Be a mistake, but he'd probably. But I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm tired of these discussions that go on and on and we know. We have no authority over this. We can have a discussion anytime again. But the next time you wanna have one like this, let me know ahead of time and I'll leave early because there's nothing we can do here. Nothing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Testa. Counselor Chertel.
Counselor Sullivan, you're a hero to me, whether or not you bring in a surplus. Now, I was gonna echo some of what you said. I, I get the intent of this discussion. I appreciate that. But I think the appropriate time is during budget season and then we can go on record. Whether we want money for the pool or for police officers or for fields or whatever, we can have a discussion during budget season. A holistic discussion that includes education because of that hundred and fifty-nine million, two thirds of it's the Board of Ed. That's the time to do it. You know, or we can change the charter. I wonder how you'd do that. Well, anyway. You could change the charter and give us the authority. That's the other way to do it. So, you know, that's all I have.
Counselor Fishbein.
So Janice brought up about the money not being transferred and the intent. So by way of example, in the budget, there is an appropriation for the pension. I recently found out that the amount that is spent on that budget line is usually significantly less and that that money goes to reserves. This body could discuss whether or not we are in favor of funding at the level that was approved in the budget so that that percentage of funding gets higher because it's about seventy-two percent. Or just throwing up its hands and saying, we don't care and let the mayor decide. So that's an example where there's currently a order, so to speak, a direction. But based upon the employment levels, that funding is not being met for the current. You know, I guess, and I guess, you know, I gotta think outside the box because nobody's giving me ideas, even though I asked for ideas, but you know, the cap and non-recurring fund, the 2% situation with the electric division is not a vehicle of the charter, it's a vehicle of an ordinance. So I guess this body could pass an ordinance that says that 10% of every surplus goes somewhere. Possible. And we go on. That's, we could do that too. We could have that discussion. If it's not gonna be cooperation, I mean, we certainly can, can have that discussion. So, you know, I, I understand that we can't direct. We certainly can discuss and work together to try and get out of our fiscal woes together or deal with our capital improvements together. The other account that I don't think sweeps because the ordinance doesn't call for it is the cap and non-recurring account that I've asked for on, I think, at least three occasions, the information as to how much money is in there. So I don't know what's going on with that either. There's probably money there left over because I don't think that that sweeps.
You're correct. Those, those don't, those we have to manually close out when we're, after meeting with Public Works Director and the town engineer about the status of each of those line items. You guys get the monthly report. So that's correct because that's, that's not part of the general fund. General fund by law and by generally accepted accounting principles lapses, comes to an end at the end of your fiscal year.
And there is no vehicle which authorizes that the balance of the cap and non-recurring fund goes to the general fund?
That's correct. There's no, there's no, and, and those funds continue until they're spent, until the project is completed.
And then they stay in that account?
They stay in that fund, which we call fund, I believe we call it, yeah, it's cap and non-recurring capital projects fund. We call it Fund Three Zero One, but yes, it stays in those funds.
Yeah.
We have used some of those amounts to add to roadwork projects that Mr. McCully would come in that were maybe a little bit more than the electric pilot. I forgot the last year that we did that, but it was about half, four hundred ninety some odd thousand dollars.
Those appropriations don't come before us.
Yes, they do. That, that comes before you in the budget process, so you approve the budget.
No, 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 no.
And if there's a supplemental.
Additional appropriation for the balance reserves of cap and non-recurring.
That would come to you.
And I, I don't think it ever has.
It was part of a budget ordinance. It was part of the budget process that year. I'd have to go back and see what year it was. So you approved it as part of the revenue stream of the cap and non-recurring fund for two thousand and, two thousand and eleven or some, some odd year. If you're like, if you're gonna be around tomorrow, I can give you a screen and tell you what year that, that budget was, or I can send through Barbara Thompson.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can send you a photocopy of that.
Cause I don't have a.
That budget.
But I, I take your word at it. Okay. That's all I had with regard to this side of it.
Anybody from the public care to speak?
Mayor, counsel. Basically.
Name an address for the record, please. Name an address for the record, please.
Okay. Darrell Stancuna, Eighteen Old Village Circle.
Thank you.
Basically, what I'm hearing tonight is that we're at an oversupply surplus of money in the budget. No?
Surplus monies are used to balance future years' budgets. Correct.
Okay, because someone mentioned, Mr. Sullivan mentioned we're two million over on the budget surplus, something about AT&amp;T?
No, yeah, no. May I clarify, Mr. Chairman?
Briefly.
Okay. What I was saying, Mr. Stancuna, is that in my private business, if, if I, if I had a budget of a hundred and fifty-eight million, which is about the town budget for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year and I came in with a million to a two million dollar surplus under it, I'd be hailed a hero in the business world. That, that's what I said.
Does that mean we're, the town is over two billion on the surplus? Is that, has I misunderstood that then or are we over?
No, I would, no. The surplus was not two million last year. Mr. Sullivan, I believe, was just equating.
I was using the example from my work, that if, a hypothetical, if, if I was in charge of AT&amp;T's budget and it was a hundred and fifty-eight million and I saved or had a surplus of one to two million dollars, I'd be hailed a hero in the business world. It's such a small amount in my mind of an overall budget of a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. It's, it's money, don't get me wrong, but it's a small, very small percentage of the overall budget. That's all I meant.
Because my question is, are we still cutting educational staff for children with special needs in town if we have a surplus of money with education? Anybody?
The council by state statute does not direct educational spending. That's done by the nine-member Board of Education. So if you have a question or a concern with regards to where Board of Education funds are spent, and that's, and this is true in every city and town in Connecticut by state statute, I would, I would address it with them.
All right. So there's no surplus of money that if there's an excess, it would go towards the Board of Education?
No, there's no, there's no, the excess monies in their entirety and for decades here in Wallingford have gone to offset tax increases and/or spending increases in a subsequent year's budget. And of course, the school budget is sixty percent of that now, so they are a beneficiary, if you will, of some of the surpluses.
Is there any way to like make a request for some of the monies to go towards programs in the town of Wallingford from the floor?
I, I would say probably no, but.
Like if there's a surplus of money, maybe it could be added towards, maybe splitting the senior center in half with, not just with the seniors, but with teenagers, the place where they could play pool and have programs with and have some of the budget spent.
Those are service delivery type questions, I think, that are better proposed to the nine members. We don't, administration, at least I don't, direct spending. I mean, that's an elected person's function, so. I don't, I'm not saying I disagree with you or I agree with you, but those are, that's the body right there that you have to speak to.
We'll note your request.
Who up on the nine members would I direct that question to?
The clerk.
Mr. DeTerno?
The clerk.
Barbara Thompson?
Yes.
You can send me an email. Thank you.
I thought the town doesn't have emails.
That's false.
You can send me an email and I'll forward it. Thank you.
All right. And then if there's emails, can we pay online?
I can't get into that, sir. I'm sorry.
Confusing.
There's, there's a government payments website you can go to and you can pay your utility bills online.
And then the other question is. And then the other question is, with the financials, could you tell us if there is going to be any money towards programs for teenagers? And I know that the town of Wallingford and across the state and across the country and the world, but we're talking about the town of Wallingford, has a serious drug problem with opiates. It's all over the news on TV.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interrupt, but I think we're way off base here.
Well, what I will tell you is that we have a very well-funded Youth and Social Services Bureau, and during the budget time, there was talk about money that goes to Coalition for Better Wallingford, so we are not, or we're not, certainly not ignoring the problem.
All right, is there any way, maybe we could get, like, another program involved? That's what I'm saying. With maybe adding something with the senior center.
You can-
Add, like, the, you know, teenagers program, because this is summertime, and there aren't really that many, as we saw in the news, that many beach jobs. They've cut lifeguard jobs, a lot of jobs for our youths that aren't around like they were back in, you know, five years ago, and even the eighties, nineties. So we got to really protect our youth. There's not many jobs out there for summer jobs for kids like there used to be, and we really can't ignore them, because that's definitely a problem with, you know, with the system, and we just sometimes get ahead of ourselves and worry about things, and then forget about the kids that are going to be in the future. So we could try to maybe get some kind of program for the teenagers in town, you know, be busy. That way, you know, I don't, I know there's no curfew, but if we could keep something positive message for the youths in town, I think that would be really important for me. I've been in this town for, next month, forty-eight years. Forty-eight years in this town. So I will be forty-eight next month. So this is a very strong concern of mine that I've seen with changes, and I know a lot of people get caught up about money and whatnot, but my main concern is definitely the kids in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Cappy, please come up. You'll be next, Joe. Doris?
Barbara Cappy, Sixth Demi Road. Put this on the record, I'm actually going to compliment the mayor for the first time. Or based on your costume of last week, I should maybe say, render unto Caesar that which is Caesar's. How can you come up with the surplus when the fiscal year has not ended? It is conceivable that the, the water main in front of the town hall could burst, there could be major damage. Not all the bills are in, so how can you come up and say, to this date, I want a figure? And it seems like you're arguing over, I want to know that amount so that I know what I can allocate to spend on a new project. And it doesn't seem necessary, since there is already money, and if you come up with a proper project, I'm sure the mayor and Mr. Bowles would consider it. So you're, we're arguing over this nebulous figure at an inappropriate time and doing nothing but aggravating Mr. Sullivan. So, I mean, let's let it just go the way it's been going and leave it at that. Thank you.
I'm glad she chose Mr. Sullivan and not the chairman. Counselor Marone?
Counselor Marone? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I do find it unusual that the, our chief executive and our comptroller don't know how much money the town has in the bank. But that being said, the motion that we're talking about is about, are we going to have a discussion about this in December? I, I'm not even certain what we're debating at this point. It seems to be this endless roundabout discussion about what the surplus is going to be, what we could, we could do with the money, and so on and so forth. And it just seems like an utter complete waste of the last ninety minutes. So I guess I'd like to call a question based on that.
There's a motion to call the question and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This is to call, this is on the motion to call the question.
To call the question, thank you. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Oh, God, yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Oh, yes.
And the motion, oh, yes, passes.
All right, the roll call on the underlying motion.
Just give me a second, just finding clean space. Okay, Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Chertel?
No.
Sullivan?
Nah.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
No.
Motion fails.
On to items thirteen and fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Section one dash two-two-five-F and Section one dash two-hundred-six-B of the Connecticut General Statutes Regarding Strategy and Negotiations with respect to the pending tax appeal matters of the Connecticut Subq. LLC versus Town of Wallingford and Two Fairfield Boulevard Properties LLC versus Town of Wallingford.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Kindly clear the chambers, please. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting back into public session. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Connecticut Subq. LLC versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Two Fairfield Boulevard Properties LLC versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. There being no other business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, I declare the meeting adjourned.